All right, it is 5:30. This is the committee of the whole meeting. It is June 13, 2023. We are in City Hall, Council Chambers. Local?
Mr. Russell?
President.
Mr. Kayler?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Present.
Ms. Vermane?
Here.
Mr. Rick?
Here.
Mr. Weiss?
Present.
Mr. Swack?
Here.
And Mayor Haas?
Here.
Eight here out of nine.
Thank you. Next item is public comment. Do we have any public comment? Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to general agenda items as discussion and possible recommendation on electric vehicle charging stations. Engineer Akee went around with Wisconsin Public Service and picked out some spots where it would be the least amount to put these, and I'll turn it over to him if he feels comfortable.
We have in front of you kind of just a brief overview of what Wheelers approached us with. They talked about five vehicle charging stations, and we tried to find locations where we wouldn't have to put transformers in or do a whole lot of infrastructure work. We chose the spots based on that and trying to get people to spend time downtown, the Mark, west side. Locations were picked out based on that. We were looking at the lot next to Jenny Towers down here, the parking lot. There really isn't a good place to put one there. That was the one where we had picked out also. Would take quite a bit of work as far as electric work, transformer, and some other issues there. So we decided to put two at the Mark. This is all just a concept we're bringing to you guys. You guys are, I should say, guys, people. It can be changed. It can be, if it's approved to do it, we can definitely change locations if somebody sees fit. Total is right around $30,000 to do the electrical work, and there's going to be some paving work and some improvement to the bollards to protect the charging stations if approved. We've had good discussions among staff and a few other persons as far as is it the city's job to supply vehicle charging stations? Are we competing against private businesses? Are these things obsolete the day we put them in the ground? They wanted originally to have a five-year period where they would be responsible for warranty and then another five-year period where we would be responsible. That really shied us away from even talking about it. They said, "If you don't like that, at least cross that portion out as far as the second five years." That's where we're at. I think there's probably going to be next generation, next generation, you know, two, three years down the road, there may be something bigger, faster, better. I don't know. It's up to you guys. Those are our thoughts as far as should we do it? Should we invest in it? I think it is a good marketing tool to bring people off the highway. I mean, that's what we always talk about, getting more people further than just, you know, Pine Ridge QuickTrip. We want them to get through town and into town and spend some time here and stop back and shop and do other things. So that would be the marketing end of it. I'm not real keen on some of this green energy stuff, but that's my personal opinion.
Your Honor, I have a couple of questions.
Yep, go ahead.
Does, or I guess, does Google Maps show the location?
What they do is they have several different apps that show vehicle charging stations. Brickner's is putting in, I think, four or five right now, one on the public side and one on the private side. Those are the high, class threes.
Class three, yeah.
And then the other ones are class twos like these are. There is one in the parking lot at American Inn, and there's one over at QuickTrip, but those are both class ones. It's kind of glorified 110 outlet. Other than that, I know Bremen's, they're shying away from putting them in yet. Wheelers is trying to put some in down there, but they don't have the three-phase for the high, the class three chargers. They're working on that. I don't know. I think if it was something that was real high demand, that the private sector would be filling this void.
Yeah, I go to QuickTrip quite often for fuel, and I'm not sure if I've ever seen an electric vehicle in that parking stall there in the front where the entrance is there. There's other people that use it for parking, but they're not electric vehicles. And then my second question is, these different classes, could you explain that and how long it takes to charge a vehicle on those classes so that people understand if somebody comes off the interstate to find one of these chargers, that they hopefully will stop and eat lunch somewhere, go shopping, or whatever?
It all depends on what services there are, 240 or 208, not in the minutia, but it's supposed to be like a 19 kilowatt.
19, too.
19, too. We have kilowatt charger, which most vehicles will take in the neighborhood of 300 to 400 kilowatts to charge a battery. But if you have two hooked up, these chargers have two connections on them. So as soon as you connect it, you drop that in half, down to whatever it is, 9.6 or whatever it is, 9 point whatever. So you lose half the charging capacity, so it's going to take you twice as long to charge if there's two vehicles hooked up. So it is going to take you four or five hours to get, at least to charge, to get to your next location possibly if they're traveling through. That's where the marketing ploy is as far as Brickner's, they're going to do it thinking that people will stop at Culvers and grab something, come over and plug in, and then spend some time on that area. Plus, they're going to be selling electric vehicles. That's part of their requirement. So that would be the only real advantage to the city is the marketing aspect.
Question. It looks to me like Wheelers is donating the electric stations, but we're paying for installation at $230,000.
Correct. I think the charging stations somewhere in the neighborhood are $8,000 per unit.
Who collects the beat?
We do.
Is there a payback period on that, or has paid a payback?
Well, Marshfield adopted the same program through Wheelers, and they put them in down there. They adjusted their rates to cover electric cost and some of the upkeep and the maintenance, and they haven't figured out to be a 10-year payback, and they have a charge per hour as far as the hookup time, because you can't charge for the electricity, but you can charge for the connection time or the parking spot. And there, it's basically a credit card on your phone. You plug it in as far as how to get it turned on. You'd have to have a credit card and cell phone.
I have one comment recently in news. They say that Tesla and Ford are going to conform to the same hookups, and I think GM is going to follow suit to this. We standardize with the most popular hookups.
Most of the Teslas have like an adapter.
They all have adapters.
Correct.
Your Honor, I have a question. If someone's charging their car at one of these sites and something happens that their charge causes problems to their car, or the car starts on fire, whatever, who's responsible for that?
That would be us, potentially, yeah. Unless there's a disclaimer as far as, is something for the lawyer to handle?
Sorry, Tom. No, I mean, that's, you know, I mean, everybody's in the soup. You know, the owner of the real estate charger sits on, I mean, everybody's in the soup. If I lose my $100,000, like, I'm going after everybody. You know, where it sits, whoever installed the thing, whoever maintains the charger, and there's no way out of that. You can post signs from here until heck freezes over, and you're potential defendant. What are the risks? Well, I'd be happy to check with our insurance carrier on that. We would be insured. We would be covered, unless there's some kind of intentional idea.
And then another question, and I don't want to belittle Wheelers incentives or their motivation, but what is their motivation for approaching the city on this?
Well, they're going to be selling electric vehicles, so they would like it to be available. That's my take on it.
Yeah, they, when they approached us on it, it was, they want to be more active in the community, number one, being where they are, but they're not as visible in the Merrill area as the other two dealerships. They want to be more active in the community, and GM is offering this program through, and like Rod said, that they went to Marshfield, and I believe there was one other.
Medford did.
Medford, yeah, did this also. I mean, I think GM is promoting this because they know, GM is probably one of the leaders in electric vehicles right now, but coming up, so.
Does anyone think this offer still be good next budget cycle?
It's hard to say. It's, whenever change in Europe, I think we all know.
There is a program out there through public service. Well, they've been kind of dragged along with the federal government as far as offering incentives, but right now they're for commercial and for residential. Right now, there isn't a program for municipal, unless you have four more chargers at the same site, which we wouldn't in this case.
Did you inquire when you're at Marshfield, or we spoke with them, as to how much usage those chargers are doing? How often had them in?
That they haven't forwarded. I think they just put them in late last fall, but I can, I'll check on that.
I have a question. Could we use tourism, the money for the tourism tax to figure this?
From the room tax?
Yeah.
I'm not, I think that that money has to be used for, yeah, like promotion and marketing. That's pretty much.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah. I guess, yeah, you wrote the right kind of.
Right. Kathy, do you have an opinion on that?
The objective of the tourism dollars that go to the Chamber or the Tourism Commission is overnight stays. And if that helped, yeah. In terms of the portion the city's retaining, that is funding the festival grounds.
So there's no money left over in that pot at the end of the year?
No, there's no money left over at the end of the year, no.
But they divvy it out to two different organizations. We could probably potentially be one of the recipients of.
I guess I was always told that there was more money than there were requests for to spend it, but I didn't realize that's another pop or just ratings.
Under state statute, the city has to transfer 70% of the room tax to the Tourism Commission and their agent, which is the Merrill Area Chamber of Commerce. And that committee or commission determines how the money is spent.
I guess I'd like to use the idea of possibly waiting till budget time and dealing with it then, and we can ask Wheelers if that's a possibility, how long the program is good for. Do it that way.
I mean, we should be starting budget next month.
Right, but nothing finalized until.
Well, I guess my thoughts are looking at this. I could certainly, you know, if this needs to be something that we're going to budget, this would be a very well priority as far as, I'm concerned, the city expenses as far as moving forward from budget. I think the $30,000 can be built with a lot better usage, in my opinion.
When we met with Brickner's, we asked them, we point-blank told them, "We don't want to compete against you any way, shape, or form," and they appreciated that, but they said, "No, that this would actually help if we did this." So, I mean, they were backing it 100% or two.
The more you look at studies out there, our infrastructure grid right now is set up for chargers on every residential home. We'd be blowing transformers, and power grid isn't set up for electric vehicles yet. Improvements haven't been made. So we're a long ways from, what is it, 2035, where they want no combustible engines anymore?
Super, we're on here. I mean, I'm hearing that's that one we want to do. We want to hold off till later time. I mean, if the answer you get is yes, that's still within the timeframe of us being able to partner with them to do something if that's what we decide to do, I mean.
I guess I'll make a motion to forward this to a future meeting. You know, be it budget or if Rod comes up with something else, then we can always bring it back.
To a prior future committee of the whole meeting.
Correct.
Specifically to the next one, Rick, so?
No, not specific, just to a future one.
Well, I mean, I just saw that.
I'll check with.
Rod, yes, yeah, I have time to give information on, you know, where there, you know, this program is timed.
Right, if it happens by the next scheduled hour, then so be it.
And we'll check with Marshfield on the usage. That's a good point.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Alderman, Rick? So we have a motion, a second to forward it to a future committee of the whole meeting, pending information that we get back from the owner.
Yeah.
Your Honor, my only other question, it's maybe more than a comment for the co-administrators to consider their further discussion and communication on this. So we wouldn't have any of these located basically in this area of the city that we're sitting on?
Well, down at the Adrian Pavilion, that was meant so they could walk on the trail and visit the downtown. We had thought about, you know, behind the building here or out in the front of the building, and part of the sales pitch was, well, it might be good for your employees to be able to plug in while they're at work. I don't know that we want that, but she had talked that there's plenty of people that are looking for those opportunities to plug their vehicles in, and I don't know what the best solution is. We tried to pick locations where, like I said, we didn't have a ton of expense and kind of distribute throughout the city.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a second to postpone to a future committee of the whole meeting and to hold off till budget potentially after we contact the owner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion paused. Next item is discussion and possible recommendations on overall makeup of committees and commissions. I guess I'm kind of wondering if you guys could give me some direction so I could start looking at this. I know some committees are rather large, some committees are better, I don't know. I mean, it's committees and commissions, and we talked about, you know, term limits the last couple of committee of the whole meetings, and that was discussed because it's hard to find people to volunteer and to serve on committees, and I understand that. And it was left up to the discretion of the Office of Mayor to appoint, reappoint, or unappoint. I mean, do you want me to go through the committees and the commissions and bring it back to a future committee of the whole, or we can?
Your Honor, is Alderman Lofton going to be here?
Yes, he'll be here for the council.
As you recall, I had sent the two of you an email about the Housing Authority Commission because, you know, we attacked this a couple, few years ago, and I thought you could get a copy of that as a document to look at as a start point. But as far as the commissions go, and I've asked the city attorney for comment on this, there is some specific state statute law behind those commissions and things. It's okay, so yes. We would have to follow and one have the flexibility, likely what the committees.
Right.
Your Honor, the only comment that I would add to this discussion is, I think it's, I know it's hard to get enough people to volunteer, but I also think when you have the same five people serving on seven different committees, it doesn't look very relevant to the community. So it would be nice to, you know, try and involve more people, and I recognize it's a volunteer exciting thing, but, you know, I think just as much as it's hard to have a person serving on a committee for years, after years, after years, it's also difficult to have one person serving on four different committees, as I said, in our.
Yep. I've tried to divvy up as much as I can, but like you said, it's hard to get people to. And that former mayor owner tried to do, get more people involved by having that on the website where he could sign up, and I have, you know, went through that and tried to pull people off of the website and the people that applied for committee appointments that I have made. So that is a useful tool, and I hope that people do continue to apply, even if we don't have openings right now. It's good to be on there for future openings that we. So is that what we're going to do, just kind of leave it over?
On the phone?
Yeah.
The next committee of the whole, or?
Right.
Didn't we, I was looking to see, at one time I counted them, and there was a lot, I want to say like 23 is the number that rings a bell. Would we create a the Marketing Communications Committee? Did we, because one of my points was, you know, that we just don't keep growing local government by adding committees and not trying to, I don't know, reduce some or combine some. Did we combine two of them to?
Yes.
Make that a net zero?
Yeah. We combined Water and Sewer with Port Public Works at the time.
Alderman Sabaki's been a advocate for potential changes with the Festival of Grounds Committee in past meetings, and I don't know. Part of me thinks that there is some room to discuss that committee and, you know, any of the committees to have, there are John Dalludums to go to market and communications, I think, would streamline things rather.
If I may, I think we talked about the Festival Grounds Committee being the responsibility of park to park. I still believe that. I have another question for Alderman Blake. Marketing Committee, has that served its first purpose or should we continue? What's your opinion here? What?
Well, it's not done with its purpose, but it was, you know, and it's been kind of a slow process because the way, you know, the way it goes to committees and the council. But I think for the first part, I think it has served its purpose. There's been a lot of work done on our website. There's been people up in the public and sharing information and getting the word out there about Merrill. So, yeah, I think it has, and I think, you know, the next step is to get it out, which was like the original intent after everything was kind of put together, like the logo and the tagline, and was to get things out on digital media into some of the larger urban areas to try to, that was the point at the beginning, was to try to attract people around work.
Questions, you think it served its purpose or should we continue? Should we continue, or what's the direction there?
I think it, yeah, I think it should. I think there's a lot of work to be done. It's not, there's a lot of work to be done to get the digital media out and to get the whole idea to get people coming to Merrill.
I would agree with that just about, because I think we've got a lot of the ground covered. I think we're at the point now where actual results will start to show up once we start that greater marketing, and I think to cut that off now would be a waste of all the time and effort that's been invested at this point. So I definitely, and I, truthfully, I think once that gets going, the committee, I have suspicion it will be something that should be ongoing. I don't think it should go away.
It is a standing committee in the city right now, so, I mean, the former mayor made sure it was a standing committee. When we combined Water and Sewer, Port Public Works, it was just, there was a committee to help fill because the mayor has the responsibility of putting one Alderman in that, out of just one standing committee. So it's.
I think some of the volunteers from the community that are on that committee are really behind it, and they're really looking forward to some of the next stuff that's going to happen. Some of the business people, some of the people at ABC that kind of started all the research to begin with, there's definitely a lot of support for in that group. There's, I think the Chamber is 100% behind it, and there's been a lot of sharing between the two bodies of efforts still.
Yeah, the Chamber and the city's relationship has been, I don't want to say rebuilt, but kind of rebuilt.
Yeah, definitely.
And reinforced myself and the co-administrators attend the board meetings, and we're active with them and work with them quite frequently. Alderman Weiss, you want to add anything to that?
I totally agree. I mean, those two had a.
I mean, those two entities are really put together in this committee to disregard that or to see it as not very important or not support it. Like Alderman, Alderman Prominent said, uh, you know, we're supplying an effort and money that we've already put into it.
And I think that the committee should, should stay in place. I, I agree with that a hundred percent. It's, uh, you know, it's definitely a vital piece for our city right now. We need to get ourselves up to alters.
You know, the digital and technology, just nobody else is speaking coming through that.
No.
You know, and, uh, there's a niche there that we have to take advantage of with the people we have right now and try to maintain it after, at some time too. And I know everybody doesn't agree with it. You know, ever since it was started, you know, that's your opinion, I accept that, but, it, it's potential, there's a potential there that could really, you know, help us quite a bit this time.
Your Honor, I was gonna say, I think that that will, that community will also evolve a little bit more once the county starts with their marketing strategy, because then I think that the three entities could kind of start to collaborate more.
Do you see it more evolving into like a tourist, I don't, I don't, not a tourist commission, but do you see it sort of like a?
Some of that, yeah, some of that too. And like Donna said, that Donna said, uh, the county's just getting started. We're ahead of them right now, you know, and I'm sure they wanna take along with us.
I'm wondering if that can, in our future, I, I see the need for the community, that committee a hundred percent, but I'm wondering if that should be a joint county-city committee going forward into next year as we both try to market the area?
Tourism in all the counties was up, you know, and it's, it's only gonna get better, especially if they make improvements, you know, county parks around here. I'm understanding that.
I, I think that, um, for me, I think it would be really good to maybe have a, a joint committee between the, um, county and the, and the city, but there's also different, goals that they're trying to reach. So you, I, I wouldn't wanna see them, cause I think there'd be a lot of push and pull when it gets what, and, and, but I think if there was a joint committee that, you know, pooled some of the resources to do stuff that was really, um, county-wide, I think that would really help the, our marketing committee.
I think it's very positive, they're optimistic, they're probably, potentially, that we could have some of their money to help build our, our infrastructure. So I think they're really making an effort to say, hey, let's work together.
I think so, and I, I agree with that.
I'll agree with that. There needs to be some coordination of the subjects that were brought up, like you said, the Curry River and, uh, the trail system.
And your, your, your Festival Grounds Committee could forfeit in that as well, mention the two.
Yeah, that is, we've kind of worked into that right now.
I think it'd be kind of muddy waters to have a combined committee, but it wouldn't hurt to have the two groups get together. Yeah.
Coordinate yourself in a practicing.
Probably could be better off to have one of our representatives integrated into their committee. That way, our committee represents our city and our funds that we spend and we have some input on there.
Which was, which was kind of represented at their strategic plan. I was a member to that and participated in their strategic plan committee that they did have, the, the one meeting, which they came out with some pretty positive thoughts. So I know that the county coordinator, myself and, um, the county board chair, um, Police Chief Bennett and I and, uh, it was Shannon Murray, they all met together too, and we're gonna continue to meet like that too and then work together in that aspect to share some ideas and things like that moving forward. Anything else on, recommendation on makeup of committees and commissioners?
Could, could we have a list of people that are on the list?
If you go to the, if you go to the website.
It's on the website.
Yeah, everybody can look at that on there and.
They're not on the website. It's easier, it's really easy to like find stuff like Republican A's. Have you personally gone through and said, oh, this guy's been on it ten years, this guy's been on it five years or?
Yeah, I've been doing it, yeah. As, as long as I can track it back, I, I do, you know, that's, you know that. Your committee was one of them that I just did that. There's been a few other ones I, I approached on that, so.
Your Honor, my, my only other comment is, um, you know, involuntheirism across a board is, is a challenge for any organization right now. But if, making the assumption that, for example, that we have like term limits on these committees, I think one of the things that we have to answer and, and dig into is why we don't get more citizens that wanna.
Be involved.
Yeah, and be involved.
I agree. It's kind of a challenge since I came on board, two thousand and four on the council. We used to have members of the audience, some permanent seats out there for a few of them back then, but they have since gone and now, I mean, they're starting to be a little bit more movement, I think. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move on. Please stop.
The committee may convene in closed session for Sillito, Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five sub one sub C to consider employment, promotion, compensation and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to discuss the communications specialist agreement, evaluation, commitment contract and related matters.
Motion to go in a closed session.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to go in a closed session, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Paylor?
Aye.
Mr. Blake?
Aye.
Ms. Prominent? Mr. Rick?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Spock?
Aye.
Mayor Hoss?
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right, we'll go into closed session.